Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And as our first order of business, I'd like to call for a nominations and system reorganization night for nomination for school committee chair. Is there a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Paula Hatch second.
Any discussion? Okay. Paula, would you be willing to accept this and vote him?
I would be willing to accept it. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote. Lucas?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Summer?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Congratulations on the chair.
Thank you. Thank you for your contribution. You trust. I will try and do my best for you as always. I would entertain a nomination for vice chair.
I nominate... How do I do this? Do I just say it?
Sure.
Oh, break the rules. I nominate Eric.
Oh, second.
Are there any other nominations?
Who's not here? Leslie Anne. Sure.
Okay. Seeing no further, we'll do a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain because I have no idea what we're voting on. So I'm sorry.
Eric's nomination for vice chair. Do you abstain?
Oh, well, yes.
Okay. I will take nominations for secretary, please.
I'll nominate Leslie Anne.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lucas. Any other nominations? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. I guess I need to accept.
Yeah.
We didn't quite like 2020, 2021, so we're gonna try again.
Yeah, we're getting a do-over?
Yeah.
Thank God.
Yeah.
Assistant treasurer, prior position held by Mike Anton. This one comes with, just to full disclosure, there is a credit check that's actually run on the person who is assistant.
It's a bond.
It's a bond? Sorry. Okay, it's a bond.
Questions have to be answered in order for that position to be bonded.
Okay, so that's how they... Okay. And always just to tell me that it was a credit check.
You hear the response. Close.
Do you feel like that?
Yeah.
You can hear the...
I haven't asked him, but since Chris is the money guy, I nominate Chris.
No?
I can't.
Conflict of interest?
Yeah.
Yes.
So what is the responsibility of this person?
This person is on all of our bank accounts, and they would have to act if our treasurer is not available to transfer funds.
Wrong John.
John Tuffey is our treasurer.
A couple of years...
You're forgetting John?
Yeah, a few years ago, it was determined that the auditors, I think, pushed it. There should be an arm's length of independence to the actual function of treasurer. So John actually, I think he acts as treasurer for a couple of different school systems.
The previous treasurer did. He acted for all the... John's an internal businessman.
Right. He's not doing, he's not a treasurer for other school systems?
Not doing it a lot of the time.
I thought it was what we answered.
He's the internal business manager.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So you would have to, because of my position, I am not able to transfer funds. I should not be transferring funds. I should be far away from the banking activity. And we have a pretty small office, and what was happening is the superintendent went out to do the transfers. And that was never the intent of it, that I can't do it, treasurer. I mean, the superintendent does it. So this was a resolution, so we had that proper segregation of duties, and we're meeting all the financial standards, and we hired a part-time treasurer, then six to 10 hours a month. So this person would have to act in that capacity if the treasurer is not available. We have not run into that situation. Your name is on bank accounts, so I would need you to come in or would have to make arrangements, we'd assign to be the second signature on all of our bank accounts. And the treasurer's application includes, the application includes disclosing personal information so that you'd be able to be bonded.
But not a credit check?
I went to the press release for you to be bonded. They do ask financial information and do ask for your social security number.
Like what, like mortgage payments and...
No, I mean, no, it's just, they're asking about any previous naked and financial events you might have had.
Bank issues, major needs, lawsuits.
Student loans.
Yeah.
Well, I think this person should self-nominate that. I'm just saying.
Yeah. Probably. It sounds kind of...
I would almost let you know if there was anything that needed to be done. I would keep you updated on that. The transfer of the bank account spread the biggest ordeal at the beginning of the term, and if you definitely stayed in that term, we wouldn't have to do that every year. We would do it just whenever there was a change in the personnel.
I mean, I'm not close to it.
That sounds like a nomination.
Or you know the rule of thumb, the guy who is in president gets the short straw.
Jason Frazier.
I think he should be the legislative agent.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree. I agree.
Summer, do you want to put yourself out there for that one?
And then, you know what? If you look into it, it doesn't work. You should don't do that.
You feel funny? Okay. No, I'll talk to Christine and then...
I'll nominate Summer for assistant treasurer.
Second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John Tuffey is treasurer. Do we actually have to nominate and vote him again?
That's an appointed position.
Okay, so do I, do we need to appoint him again tonight for next year?
That could be done, because I think it's a one-year appointment at a time.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to appoint John again.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Very good. Legislative agent, I nominate Jason Frazier.
Oh, I second that nomination.
I agree.
He could be so easy to separate anywhere for the time being, and I don't know how long he's going to be with us, do you know?
The full term.
The full term?
Yeah.
I nominate, I'm second. Summer's nomination.
He was actually looking forward to perhaps taking that role on. He does enjoy it, so.
Yeah.
Any other nominations? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Before we move on, I do want to just take a moment to welcome our newest member, Gordon Laws from Halifax. Welcome, Gordon. You're the new face. Jason isn't here tonight, but he is certainly not a new face to this committee, coming back on after a slight reprieve, so, but do want to welcome you. We can go through some or all of the subcommittee assignments. Any that we don't assign tonight, you know, we can tackle in September. One that we should certainly do is the Pilgrim Area Collaborative. Leslie Anne, you always feel passionate about that. Would you be willing?
I am. I mean, now I'm feeling I'm in the groove. I mean, Sheila does such a great job running that committee, so I'm feeling good about it, so I'm happy to continue that.
Okay.
Somebody else has a burning desire to perform a very clever. It's like managing another organization and division.
I think that's important. Yeah, no, that's, you do a wonderful job reporting back to us and keeping us up to date.
That's important as well, right?
I feel like it's...
It is a letter.
It requires a letter.
Yeah, it just says, I'll send a letter.
You'll send a letter?
Yeah, I'll send a letter letting you know that Leslie Anne's...
Oh, Lisa, you weren't at our Halifax meeting, but did you happen to send a letter about Halifax?
I'm sending it as all one.
Oh, perfect.
I'm just waiting until this one got done, and then I can send them all.
Awesome. Thank you. Lisa, do you mind adding a hyphen to my name possibly?
I would love to add a hyphen.
I know you would. I know. It's like one of your favorite things to do. All right. Thank you.
No worries.
Okay. Just to make it official, is there a second to Leslie Anne's?
Second.
Okay. Seeing, any other appointments? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Again. As far as subcommittees, what we should tackle at least tonight is negotiations. Jill and I took a look at via Lisa graciously giving us a list of what would be up this coming year, and it doesn't really look like perhaps the AIDS are coming up.
The AIDS expires in '22.
Yep.
The SLEA is '23. The SLAA is '23, and support services is '23. So the most immediate need would be the AIDS.
The AIDS, yep.
But the answer to that, Tom, is the sick leave bank will be that committee.
Yep. Right. So this particular committee, just for the benefit of those that don't know, this subcommittee acts on behalf of the full committee, negotiating any contracts that come up. This past couple of years, the MOAs that we had to negotiate, things of that nature that were unusual, good heavens, hopefully never come up again, God help us, sick leave bank grants go through this. So any negotiating with any of the parties that are associated with the school. The members that were on this committee spent an awful lot of time this past year, year and a half, two years almost. I think that it would, I think a number of them probably would like to be refreshed with new members, and I think that's always a good experience for people. I have actually not been anything other than the alternate in negotiations in this committee, so I would actually be open to being an active member this time. I think the duty should be shared, so if a position is available after everybody else says their interest, I would be willing to fill one.
I'm certainly willing to stay on.
Okay.
I'm willing to stay on.
Okay.
I'll make space. Share the wealth and the knowledge.
That's so much talking together.
I would join in.
You would? Would? Okay, thank you. I can remain an alternate and see how that goes.
Do we not want four on it? It is good to have four.
Okay. Oh, yes, all right.
Yeah, Gordon Andrews popped off too.
So if you want, I can be the alternate, and you can jump on, Paula.
Oh, that works wonderfully. Okay.
Could we also do policy in case there's a need prior to the start of school? That could potentially be covered in the vote.
Sure, absolutely.
I don't foresee it, but I don't take anything for granted anymore.
No, I completely agree. No, I couldn't agree more. So if we could prop, if we could get members for policy.
I have a question.
Yep.
And maybe you talked about this last month. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but for these meetings, like policy, are we doing all subcommittee meetings in person, or will they, will there be video, Zoom, whatever?
That's up to the committee. We have an extension for virtual meetings per the state extension. Again, it's the will of the committee to what extent people want to meet in person or virtually. I know that there have been some benefits, for example, for sick bank, where we want to do something quickly and timely as a brief meeting. We've done some Google meets for that purpose, and it allows us to get matters done more quickly than it would have. So I think, again, it depends upon the nature of the business and perhaps, you know, the preference of the committee as to how you want to conduct it. I think it's extended at least until the spring.
April, I think.
Is it April?
Wow, that far out?
Okay.
Well, I'd be fine staying on it, but I don't need to. If there's two other people that want to do it, go ahead, but I'll do it if nobody else wants to.
I'm there anyway, but if somebody else wants to, you know, that way, you know...
Who is Jason's...
Yeah, I'm there anyway, so I'll stay there, but if somebody else wants the whole...
Next.
So you're willing to stay on that, Eric?
Yeah, unless somebody else would like to join at it.
I'd stay on it as well.
What's up?
Okay. All right. That would be, that would be great.
What just happened? I'm sorry.
Emily and Eric as well.
I'll stay as well. Oh, okay.
If with Jason not here tonight, when we populate the rest of this next time, if he feels very passionately that he wants to do something, perhaps we'll, you know, do a little bit of a shuffle, but the other one, school staff times, and well, I guess we're populating almost everything, SAFER, we should probably do SAFER tonight, Chris, because there's a lot of work to be done there.
Yeah, we just had SAFRE meeting now, which is unusual. I think we're planning maybe before school starts to get tour, so we don't have a school meeting, I think, until September.
Correct.
So, yeah, I'd love to, I'd stay on, I'd keep there. I love that meeting.
Okay.
But if other people want to join, that used to be before, everyone can be there. We usually don't vote on anything, so we don't have the same issues like we do with negotiations in terms of too many members creating form.
Right. Right. Lucas, you have a background in general construction, et cetera, so I would ask perhaps if you could stay on that one?
I would.
Thank you. I'm happy to stay on, but again, I'm open to making room for others as well.
You have such a good institutional memory of all the stuff that you did. That's why it's so helpful.
Yeah, I, that's kind of, you know, I can't remember much at home, but I remember what happens in the SAFRE meetings.
It's like the electrician with the lights going on at home.
Yeah. Okay. Couple of others, perhaps, if otherwise we can...
I'm fine if nobody else wants to join, but again, if somebody else would like to.
Okay.
And then, as we've said before, anybody can go to any of these meetings. You just don't vote.
Right. Right. I am going to pencil in Jason for this one. If he declines, that's fine, but initially, I'm going to suggest that.
What are you doing with CTE?
We can do that one tonight, and we can wait for...
I prefer to do again because it'd be part of the SAFRE tour. Hell, it was an extended tour to the CTE meeting.
Okay.
We figured we'd do it when the school's not in session.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That kind of stuff. So that was a full SAFRE slash CTE kind of...
Okay. I was asking, because Mike was on it, and it looks like there's only...
Yeah, we meet once, maybe twice a year on a good year.
Yeah.
Usually there's a dinner at CTE host for all the outside of school participants. We'll do that again, but this year, we just met once, just a few weeks ago, just kind of round about what happened.
Yep.
So it's a very inactive committee, low type management.
Are you willing to stay on that one?
Yeah, absolutely. I like that one. That's a good one.
Okay.
Fits him with SAFRE nicely, too.
It is actually, it's a great committee.
So what exactly does the committee do?
Really, we just kind of get updates from Elliot, and he wants everything, so there's really not much we need to do. It's like, in terms of CTE, think of a math department, math, right? Math team runs their stuff, or they're just bouncing ideas off of it. If we have anything coming from the school committee for him, or from Jill, we can give him a bit of added program, but if nothing like that's going on, it's really just kind of a update on what's going on, success, enrollment.
Really just higher than what we're saying.
Yeah.
Right.
And the reason it fits with SAFRE is because they have big machines and need replacing, so maybe it's a $75,000 project. It's nice to get early communication by making a CTE.
To be fair though, I mean, I've had issues in the past with the way in which the selection's done on the projects that they were bringing into CTE for external work, and that does go through CTE committee, and I've asked for a clear criteria list, and I haven't seen it, but their, last year didn't really matter as much because they weren't doing it. So for instance, like, they take applications for external work for the students, and I, you know, I've had some issues with the projects that have been chosen in the past and how they were chosen, so that does come through your committee, and eventually it comes to school committee, but I would still like to see some work done on that.
Yeah, we have done one of those in a couple of years, the garage, the two-year project. Now I think one of, at least a one, maybe two-year project, the garage on campus, so yeah, might be this year with another one, next fall, like, point two.
But duly noted, Will.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, I feel like my daughter's a CTE student, so I would like to be...
Yeah, it's nice to just have that. My sons went through the CTE program as well, and it's nice to just really see a more robust level of it, you know?
So when SAFRE does the walkthrough or whatever, could they call a entire committee email? Maybe, like, if anyone in Halifax, we do like a pre-school committee meeting, like, so it's posted, so we'll have form, but I think as a committee, it's important for us to all kind of walk through the building and know what's going on.
Yeah, generally the idea, I think.
Okay.
You're correct, I'm wrong. Just kind of, anyone wants to come for a tour?
Yeah, that part I like to deal with.
It's a tour as opposed to a meeting in which we discuss what's wrong, and Jill and Matt giving us a campus view of, here's a project, here's what the field looks like. We always talk about them, but we may never step on the field to see the issues, so we can't talk about them. That kind of stuff.
Yeah, and, you know, big projects, so it's kind of course, and then it's off, and we have an idea, we can say, I've seen it, and this is...
Yep, that's exactly what we're planning.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah, I will fill the third spot if nobody else, but again, enough.
I would like to take Michael's spot from this one.
That would be wonderful.
Good.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. School staff times, Suzanne, do you want to nominate Emily?
Second. And I'll work with her.
Okay, we'll put you two ladies. Thank you so much.
Oh, my goodness.
I was on it when we did nothing.
Really? You didn't give them a hard one?
It's been years.
Well, Paula, you had some thoughts about maybe expanding that committee to be a joint committee with the other two schools, other core schools, I should say.
You know, if we want to talk briefly about it now, my thought was, and I shared with Leslie Anne a couple of days ago, and then with a broader group tonight, or earlier than today, I should say, the last time this topic was looked at was like 2016-ish, and there was a survey conducted, and it's very dated material in a PowerPoint. Some of it's still relevant, but it is dated, but just to give a senseful what the flavor of the town's mentality was then, you know, five, six years ago now, almost. My thought is, this is a district-wide effort. We can't do anything from a Silver Lake standpoint and push it out to the other schools. So as it was the last few times this topic was looked at, we really should involve the other school committees and make it a broad view. So my thought would be to contact the chairs of the other school committees and ask them to please bring this topic up and see if there's an appetite from a joint perspective to look at this, because we can't go anywhere without the other school committees on board.
I mean, ideally, if either two school committees could assign two people to it, then we could have a working group, you know, a three-school committee working group as opposed to a formal public body, and then we could do some work and bring it back to...
Absolutely. Joint, absolutely. So I would just think the first step would be to get the buy-in of the other school committees.
So...
Yes.
Would you like two people from each elementary committee? Or one?
It could be up to the school.
Yeah, I would say that, too.
Okay. Just so there's representation from every...
Right, because it is a district-wide decision.
I think that's appropriate.
So, we'll have to look at when the committees are meeting, the elementary committees, so this will probably have an update sometime after our September meeting, perhaps, depending on those dates.
I have a question. Well, you just made me think of it, but I, we have this, it has like the list of meetings, and I noticed that in like, when I was at middle school, like, we have these calendars. Is there value to printing this on the back of a calendar so parents know when all the meetings, like a double-sided? I feel like as a parent, I would never know when...
Don't think that.
Like, I would love to have more people listen. I don't know.
I'm sorry, so the back of the calendar traditionally is all the contact information.
Okay. There you go.
I don't think it's there, though, this year. Is it the back of the calendar?
It's not. It's just blanked. That's why I thought it. So I was like, man, it would have been great if this was on the back of it, and then people could just flip it over, and you'd be like, oh, here's all the school meetings, so all these seats would be filled with people.
Yeah, sure.
There's not on Zoom anymore.
It is on the website.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on all of those, Paul?
No, those we don't. Yeah.
Are you going to touch upon it, or are you going to wait?
I'm going to wait just for Jason for that, so, okay. Public participation. And Lisa, let me know if you see any...
There are people going in.
Okay, wonderful. We are being recorded by Area 58. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. Approval of minutes, May 20.
I read them. I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the regular session meeting.
Is there a second?
Certainly.
Okay. Any discussion on them? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay.
Who's abstaining?
Eric. I will make a motion for the executive session. Do we need to hold? Is my question?
I was going to ask, at least, sorry, do we need to hold executive session minutes?
I don't know what April 8th. I don't have the copy of April 8th because I gave it to Jill.
It was about...
Their negotiations.
Vacation carryover, which was decided.
I don't think that it needs to be held, but...
It doesn't look like the May 20th one's needed to be...
No, I know May 20th doesn't really need to be held, but I did feel like it would only be April 8th.
I apologize.
No, it's just towards the approval of the support staff contract on the 20th, and April 8th was the decision of the vacation carryover. Goals have been announced in the first session.
Okay. Leslie Anne?
I'm sorry, I just, just for point of clarification on the fact on the May 20th, I know we just voted on it, but I know, remember we tabled the dual enrollment discussion, and then when I got here, we untabled it? And then we discussed it, we voted on it, but there's nothing in the minutes about untabling the motion that was tabled.
In which minutes?
On the May 20th.
Regular minutes?
Yeah, it just says, Mr. Andrew made a motion to table the dual enrollment discussion, and then like on page four, it just all of a sudden says, now we're starting talking about, I just, I don't see.
Yeah, I don't believe there was ever a vote that occurred.
Did we?
I can go back and look at the recording.
Yeah, I just didn't know by.
I don't believe there was ever a vote that occurred.
Do we have?
We just verbally tabled it and moved on, and waited for you.
Well, there was a motion to table it.
Was, there was a motion?
I just didn't untable it? I thought we untabled it by motion, but if we didn't, we should have, I guess.
If there was a motion, yeah.
Okay, do you want to hold these minutes and not approve them?
I'm sorry, I know we just voted on it, but I just kind of noticed that part of it.
Yeah, can we resend? Can I resend my motion to approve these minutes?
Yes, because you're on the approving side, so, yes.
Yes, you can both resend, and then we'll bring them to court for the next meeting in September.
Okay.
And in the meantime, I'm going to watch the kind of joint meeting.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Lisa. So why do you make a motion to resend?
Yes.
So I'm late to resend the minutes from being approved to hold in the next meeting.
I'll second. Do I have a second? I'll second then.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
So then I guess my question is, what do we do if it wasn't untabled? Is it still set tabled, and we have to untable it now, or next time?
You need to wait to see, wait to see.
You know.
I'm not trying to be the procedure nerd here, I just want to make sure we're doing our procedure. Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll circle that.
Okay, yeah.
Circle that.
Okay, again, I'm sorry to be the procedure nerd, but just wanted to.
Oh, sorry. How about the executive session minutes, folks, and it appears they don't need to be held for any reason?
Okay, so I will move to approve and release the executive session minutes from May 20th and April 8th of 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay.
Good question.
Eric abstains. Yes?
So I have a question about the May 20th executive. I wasn't there, obviously, I'm a kid who graduated, so I was surprised by the fireworks, which were awesome, by the way. But my older kids were all very upset because they didn't get fireworks when they graduated here.
They also didn't.
They also didn't.
They also didn't get P and D.
That is true. They didn't get to do their school from home for that whole year, which they said was a good thing for my youngest son. But anyways, I'm wondering if, I saw in the minutes that two companies paid for it. Is that something that we, did you guys already publicly thank them?
We, I think when we, I didn't mean to interrupt you, though. I think we did ask that Michaela send a letter of thank you at the time.
Got it, okay.
Because it was wonderful.
Oh, yeah, it was amazing.
Yeah.
I think that's awesome. I had no idea.
Surprising.
Oh, see, you thought you knew, dude, you're like, I already know.
No, no, I didn't know what the fireworks, I just didn't know that the companies donated them, I think that's great.
Yeah, I had no idea.
Yeah, that was, that was great.
But I kept hearing the band there, and everything together during the ceremony.
Let's get all that ruckus.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
I don't either.
Yes, so we can take it in regular order if you'd like, or I can skip to it now. I won't do as good of a job as the chief.
Oh, we'll take it in regular order.
Okay.
Detective by closeout.
Thank you.
How exciting. In your package, in the actual package you received, there is a copy of the closeout for right now. It's not etched in stone quite yet. Things are still happening, but as of right now, this is everything that we know as of this moment. We're trying to uncover everything, so we're trying to uncover everything that we can. We had our budget, we started with $26,698,517.12. We have made expenditures of $26,50,916.62. And then we have some items that are still uncovered. Those are mostly for invoices that we just do not have yet. That's most of that as well. And so if we get to the bottom line, we are returning to E and D, $411,457.12. But what I do want to say is there are some things that aren't yet confirmed. The biggest contributing factor to this is the CARES Act funding. We, the towns were extremely generous, and we used CARES Act funding in three different phases. The first phase was the town of Kingston made it available to us, when they realized the allotment they had that made it available to us. Second phase was we met with all three towns, and all three towns agreed to jointly give us access to CARES Act funding, because we did not have access on our own. And they shared that participation, that based on their enrollment. And then the third phase was the allotment that was given to us, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that was sponsored by local rate capital and adjunct. So in total, that was $636,000 that we had access to. The difficult thing is, we have not received all of the reimbursements. Some of those items we may need to bring back into the operating budget. Materially, it's been covered, and we've had a series of questions from the towns. But what happens is, we submit all the documentation to the towns, everything from PO through actual cancel check. The town then transfers that information, submits it to Plymouth County. Plymouth County goes through their own process of vetting all that information, has an audit team review it, and then they issue reimbursements. So we have received reimbursements so far of $307,000. It's not a very fast process, but the towns are experiencing the same thing. So that's where we are right now. We're not expecting to be a large dollar amount, but we are expecting that there may be some portion that we would need to bring back to the operating budget. So I was wondering if you're aware of that, that this is not quite etched in stone. And I will update you as I get more information.
Questions?
Yeah. So if it goes into the operating budget, and then we receive the CARES Act funding from the towns, or does that then supplement the operating budget for what was given out?
We were hopeful that it was all stated, and we would know this, of course, we know this by June 30th, but it just hasn't worked out that way. So we've been kind of holding on to see what happens. I think my next phase is just to confirm what the towns, what their final submissions were, and if they've had any questions about Plymouth County. Because Plymouth County's pretty good about any questions they have. They don't just reject things, they ask for additional information before they would do anything like that. So we can kind of keep this open for a little bit, but I'm not sure that we're going to have the conclusion of this in a timely fashion. What would probably happen is if we brought some back into the budget, because we would not have a recourse next year to do that. So if we close out, and I assume I'm getting another $330,000 from three towns, and I don't get that, I don't have a recourse of how I'm going to capture that loss. What I could do is if we closed out the year as it is, or we took an allotment in for a percentage, maybe that won't be paid back from Plymouth County. If we did end up raising money next year, that would go to our miscellaneous income, which would then feed to our free, to our E and D, to our excess deficiency. Does that make sense?
It does. I have a follow-up question, though. Are we at risk for not being reimbursed for some of the purchases we made?
No, everything that we submitted fit into the guidelines, what they were looking for. The one thing that we ran into.
So they had to go through a process of approval.
Right.
I just didn't know if there was a snag.
We had the guidelines of what the purchases could be. When we submitted to the towns, they had to convert it to a spreadsheet, they had six different categories, and they had to fit to the categories. And then it goes through an initial review. So there were some questions that did come early on. One of the things that we know that was not covered early on, but is now, is when we submitted for, for instance, one of the towns had mentioned to me they had to buy their purchase Zoom, the Zoom package for a year. You can't buy it a month at a time, or they couldn't. They could only buy it for a year. So Plymouth County was only going to reimburse it for three months, because originally that was the timeframe that was covered. Now they said, oh, we're going to carry it for the whole year. So I'm really, I don't know, I don't think it's going to be anything material. I think they'll be minor, minor type items. So I would lean towards maybe perhaps taking an allotment against our current closeout with the expectation that we would probably receive more than I was expecting based on that. And then that could always come into miscellaneous income, and then flow back to E and D for the end of next year.
So net-net, if we're paid the way we think we should be, net-net, we're putting $411,000 in E and D, net-net, in a perfect world. Because if we hold an allotment aside, we get the rest of the CARES Act money we're expecting, and that allotment in theory would be sort of in our operating budget.
Released in the following year.
Right, exactly. So net-net, we would be in the same position that we are.
Yes, okay. The $411 would just.
So my question is, what you're suggesting is that you not do the $411, that you back that out, like whatever it is, $100,000, whatever it is, you're saying?
Yeah, I'm thinking something, you know, $25,000 to $30,000, maybe?
So that money, if you back that out, you're not putting in the $411, you're putting in the $3, whatever it is, $70,000.
$381, yeah.
So you're putting in $381, which would be available in E and D after it's certified in whatever it is, November?
This amount would be certified, and we have our E and D certified the next time, correct?
So then the $25, if we got that next year, it'd be certified the following year? So it's just, we're putting off the availability of that $25,000 for a year?
Correct.
And does that affect our capital, like that $25,000 is going to affect our capital?
$400 is more dramatic than $25. Yeah, $400 is not as much as we have.
Right, right. Yeah, for those that don't know, we usually had quite a larger number going into E and D.
This is a pretty healthy amount to go back towards E and D, because it's not just this one side, it's also the other side of our revenues, excess revenues that we have.
Okay.
So it's a combination of two.
Okay.
And again, we can hold aside and keep an E and D up to 5% of our annual budget, and then use it as the school committee and the towns through town meeting seem, you know, appropriate. E and D hasn't been as robust the last couple of years overall, as it has been the years prior for a number of different reasons.
I think we've had a more thoughtful capital plan, that we've been using the E and D to fund that capital plan.
Right, yeah. E and D itself, though, our residual balance at the end of the year hasn't been as robust to put in E and D, because we haven't had the windfalls and unexpected things that we were, you know, blessed with, if you will, several years ago, so. Okay, so you're thinking $25,000 or $30,000, Christine?
I think we need more than enough to cover.
Wait, Leslie Ann?
Just a quick question, I'm wondering if, since hypothetical, of course, if we had three towns pass that trust that we'd asked for, would that be where that money goes?
No. No. That's a whole separate, you mean for the stabilization fund?
Exactly.
That's a whole separate standalone issue that we need to seek permission, first of all, just to establish the fund.
Right.
And then the mechanism to fund it.
Okay.
So we couldn't take that indirect path to make that happen.
Right, no, I'm not saying we couldn't now, I'm just saying, had it passed with all three towns, even though it did, we couldn't. Okay.
If it had passed with all three towns, we would have to budget that specific line in our budget. We'd have to align, say, stabilization fund, and have the funds go towards that fund.
Right, not from our E and D. It would come from the towns themselves.
No, I totally understand.
I don't think that's what she's saying, though, right?
I'm just saying that some of the things that we're paying out of our E and D are the type of things we would have paid out of a stabilization fund, if we had one.
If we had one, yes.
So we're thinking of capital fund. Why you have to need a stabilization fund.
If we had it, if it was funded.
Right.
Yes.
So what we're doing, instead of just transferring it to E and D?
We're taking the indirect, we're taking the path we have to take.
No, no, I understand that, I'm just trying to make the argument of why we need a stabilization fund and not to rely on E and D.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that that's coming down the pipe as well.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on this, any other questions? If not, does somebody want to make a motion to, because you mean?
Except as presented less $30,000 as a reserve.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Christine, for all the admins, but thank you, Christine, for dealing with all of these issues this past year, with CARES Act, with all of the committees, all of the towns. There's, that's been a lot of work.
Thank you, we've had a lot of help making that happen, so, and I think it worked, really talking directly to the towns. That was what made the difference, I think.
And hopefully, we never have to do that again.
I do know, I'm a pandemic expert.
No, my goodness. You and Eric.
Thank you for your hard work. You can ask about it, Christine.
Just so everybody at the table knows what we're doing, most probably do, but we do have new members and members that haven't been physically, you know, with us in meetings. We are signing warrants which are paying the schools' expenses. Feel free to look through, see what some of the backup looks like, the reasonability, et cetera. But we are circulating things and asking for signatures, and I just wanted to take a moment to explain to anybody who isn't familiar with them, what these are.
We don't, actually, just correct me if I'm wrong, we only need a form of signatures on this. So if somebody wasn't comfortable signing something, after this.
We need five signatures, at least one person from each town.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, moving on, I've got our agenda.
I don't know if you're good for standing.
Oh, we're closing. Yeah, but if. Closeout, yes, if everything's good for the closeout.
I think so.
One from each town, and a total of five.
The next thing I want here is that for single signature signers, so during the pandemic, and as we were working remotely, we had three signers that would, I would forward the warrant cover sheets to them, I'll leave it with, and the superintendent as well as those three folks would sign. So we would see if we would like a new group, or if a safety would like to just wait in case we have the need for that. It worked out pretty well.
I'll nominate myself as long as Eric shows me how to do the electronic signature.
It's pretty easy.
It's free.
Works out just fine.
It's awesome. I'm happy to do it.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
And for the purpose of this, it does not have to be three different towns.
Okay.
Oh, I thought it was different.
For the actual warrant purposes, I do, but for the electronic, I just need three members. It's a subcommittee of three.
Oh.
We just need to respond, because if it's doing electronic, and no person isn't doing it, it can't go to the next.
It doesn't move forward, yeah. It's one person at a time.
I can be the third person if you want. And Christine, we don't have to do a vote on this, right?
I think we do, because this is something I would have to present to the auditors as authorization to do this.
Okay, all right. We have three people who offered to do that, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Okay, yes, we do, we have our representative in the Kingston Police Department.
Hey there. I'm Laura. Yes, I wanted to make sure it's in the paper. That's horrible last name.
Thank you, and she's here to discuss National Night Out, which is proposed for August 3rd, and she's here to answer any questions. This is a wonderful event that has taken place on our school campus for several years. It helps build, foster a sense of community between the police and its citizens.
That's perfect, that's exactly what my whole studio was going to be. Eric, I know we got children, have volunteered for me for many years. Thank you, they're great kids, by the way. Yes, I don't know if you have any questions. We were fortunate enough that Silver Lake Regional opened up their campus to us, because every year, I've done it for the last 14 years, it keeps getting bigger and better, and this is a great campus, with the location, the parking availability, and just the size, and I can keep everybody separated, you have a K-9 demonstration. I'm hoping to have the state police helicopter. I put in my request first, January 1st, the lady always laughs at me in the office, because one year, they only let the state helicopter come to one National Night Out, and it was the first person that requested the helicopter, got the helicopter. So now I'm always the first one to make sure that I don't miss out. So once again, it is Tuesday, August 3rd. I'm also looking for any student volunteers to help me.
Oh, good, I was just going to ask that.
Yes.
So how do you?
You contact me at the station.
Can you just, maybe for everybody, tell us your name again?
Sure, it's Laura Casey-Poupet, but if you just ask for Laura at the station, they know where you am.
Okay.
And then I'll definitely set them up, give them all the information that they need.
The non-emergency number.
Yes, the non-emergency. That's why, non-emergency. I don't know if anybody has any question.
Laura, I will also share that information with our principals as well, because they may be aware of some students who might be interested in.
Yeah, definitely, since last year, students can have the opportunity to volunteer. It's a great way, it's a high work, I'm not going to lie, but it's valuable, and you get to meet all public CD and other towns. And it's great. Thank you, Samson, fun.
Leslie Ann? I'm really excited about this event coming back again. It's really a positive event for our community, especially considering we have a school resource officer in the building. It's great, you know, everybody sees that officer every day, but maybe the parents and the younger kids don't, so I think it's great for that as well. I am wondering, I'm sure, maybe Jill, could you, I'm kind of hoping we're going to bring back our community service requirement this year, that we waived the last two years because of COVID, and I'm wondering if maybe.
It's my understanding that it will be brought back, that it was waived this year because of the inability for some students to serve on a virtual platform, because of safety reasons, and that was the only reason for the request for a one-year waiver.
I'm sort of wondering if maybe in your request for the principals to, or at least the high school principal to put out a note about needing school volunteers, may put that a little nuts, you know, you can get some community service hours, because I don't want kids to think that maybe they're going to not have to do that again, and some of them might be a little behind. I don't mind if it's going to be behind as a senior, but just.
Send them my way.
Yeah, so it'd be a great thing for them to volunteer.
Because I need help before the event, because I also rent a box truck, and we have to pick up the food and the water, the chips, the snacks, so it's just not the day of. It's actually a four-day event of my life that I bring this together. So this is the prep, the actual day of the event, and the cleaning. Nobody likes to clean.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
Okay. Do you have an age requirement for your volunteers?
I would like them the junior hires, probably the youngest, that some of the age range, I don't remember how old, 12, 13, 14. It's a big commitment, because I have stations set up, and I need the children to be mature enough to speak up and stay focused. I don't need kids on their phones like, that's it, really. They need to pay attention and step up.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
I think we need a motion, though.
I think that would be for your approval.
Okay.
Yes, especially where it's, you know, it's done. It's an unusual event, but I think it's more, again, typically, our building use forms are not, and they don't go through here, but because they.
The scope of the.
The scope of the event, I think typically, they have come here for your approval.
So moved. Second, okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I won't accept volunteer, exempt volunteer. Even if your kid's like, I would love to have you. Always do something to do that. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming by today.
Thank you.
So just to get everyone up to date, I don't believe at our last meeting that this information was yet finalized, but masking indoors and maintaining other health and safety guidance is not required but encouraged. And that's a change in the Department of Education as well as Department of Health recommendations. We also discussed it with the Kingston Board of Health in particular because of our, our summer programs that are taking place within this town as well. So unvaccinated individuals are encouraged to continue to mask, especially when you can't socially distance. But that is the current language and I just wanted people to be aware of that. For the fall, schools will be required to be in person full-time, five days a week. And all DESI health and safety requirements will be lifted. This includes physical distancing. However, there's a little caveat statement in this notice that says, recommendations, DESI will continue to collaborate with the Department of Health to issue any additional health and safety recommendation over the summer. For example, masks for elementary students. DESI will provide updates to districts as it receives them. At this time, I do not anticipate that masks will be required, but they have created that little...
Ambiguity.
Ambiguity. So I, I can't say for certain. And so I just wanted to point that out. I think we're all hopeful that we can return to as much normalcy as possible, but I can't promise you that. So I just want to point that out. This week, an email was sent to all school committee members. And if I failed to get the MCAS update to all school committee members, because you are a new member and not on my list, if you could please let me know if you did not receive that, I'm happy to send that out. And I apologize to you for not getting that to you. But basically, what they're saying is, is that for this year, they're going to keep us at our 2019 accountability levels, that the data this year will only serve to inform schools to help provide interventions, but it will not change our accountability level for 2021. They anticipate that next year, this is a one-year only, and that next year we will resume our normal accountability reporting expectations with the state in terms of MCAS results. And MCAS was a bit modified this year under the circumstances. So I, again, I don't know what format the data will come in and what, how, how that data will be used, but we anticipate to continue to get data over the summer months. And we will begin to work on it with our coordinators and local principals. We discussed summer learning opportunities in our last meeting. And I think, I think that covers all of the district update items since our last meeting.
And Leslieann?
So just, just so I make sure that everybody in the public has heard this and I'm crystal clear on this. So no masks for the fall, no social distancing for the fall, no proof of vaccination for anybody. Is that correct?
At this time, that's how it appears. But I can't promise you that because they have that little statement in there that makes me uneasy.
So you don't have to register your vaccination status?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not aware of that at all. No.
Okay. I'm just asking because my...
There's not even any discussion.
...require you to register your vaccination status.
There's been no discussion of that in any of the venues that I've participated in, whether it be with the commissioner or with other meetings for other superintendents, those kinds of things. That is, that has not been discussed. What has been discussed is the possibility of a clinic, a vaccination clinic for all community members 12 and older in Kingston, Halifax, Plimpton, Duxbury, that will be staffed by volunteers from the Kingston Board of Health and nurses. And that, we will send out information to community members if they're interested in participating in that. That will take place at Kingston Intermediate School. Originally, they had requested the use of high school or middle school because their families tend to be larger, but we are having work done at both of those buildings. So it's going to be at Kingston Intermediate School. And again, it's voluntary for those people who are, who are interested. And that information will come out from the Kingston Board of Health under Nurse Leader Carol Back. We'll be supplying that information to families. So we're hoping for two dates in July and two dates in August.
Any other questions?
I don't know. It's connected out exactly, but like, would there be any kind of select, like protocol for contact tracing still with people having COVID? So like if the kid next to my kid in school has COVID, everybody knows it, but, or they're out sick, but nobody, there's no notification?
Again, local Board of Health and the Department of Health may put in certain, certain expectations in terms of, you know, similar to like when someone has strep throat.
Yeah.
The nurse might put out a notification that there was a child in the classroom that had strep throat. Or if you experience any of these symptoms, please contact your physician.
Okay.
I can see something like that, you know, probably what being put into place for, for those types of circumstances. Again, I can't, I, at this point, this is all of the information we have. This makes it sound like, no, there won't be that kind of contact tracing in the more formal sense that we had this year. Will the Board of Health continue to contact trace and things of that nature? Will healthcare providers still continue to collect that data? Probably because the state is still collecting that data and tracking cases, especially with the new variant. But I'm, again, I can't say for certain what that will look like and what the expectations would be. It would appear that it would not have the same expectations or repercussions that it, that it did during the past school year. So if you're sick, you may be required to stay out for a certain number of days. But contact tracing may not have the same impact that it did for the school year. Again, it's, they're acting as if these, these measures are being lifted and they don't anticipate they will be in place for the fall. I think what's interesting though is that it's the, the elementary students in particular, we don't have a vaccine pool. But again, we don't have the same type of issues that we have with other populations with regards to COVID. So I, I, I can't say for certain what it will look like, but it will be in the hands of the Department of Health and the Department of Education to determine what, if any, guidelines will be put in place. And DESI will be working with the Department of Health. They don't operate in isolation. So.
In terms of the, the summer learning programs, is the fall curriculum sort of being adjusted at all to try and catch kids up, if that's the right way to put it? Or we, we covered everything we needed to in ninth grade and run away with test grade. I don't know what it would look like. Probably a board.
Again, with, with regards to anticipating the fall, there are a number of things. One, we have the summer programming. We have the extended school year, which we always have for special education students. We have two acceleration programs for students, which are specifically geared towards students at certain grade levels. And that will help with English, math, social, emotional, but are specifically designed to accelerate. It might accelerate, I don't mean going faster. What accelerating means is determining what's most important for students to know and be able to do, aligned with the standards. And then focusing that work in project-based learning. Now, project-based learning is not a pretty diorama or poster. Project-based learning in its, in its truest, most effective sense is a, a problem that a student solves or creates a solution for, that allows them to go further in depth and to demonstrate mastery and understanding of material. And it allows students to basically learn more material because of the, the way that the instruction is being taught and presented. So for the fall, what will happen is, is that we will begin to look at certain points of data. MCAS may be one of those points of data. We also have a number of tests, especially at the elementary, for example, that we have always used to determine where students are at particular levels and then to determine interventions. One of the things that we want to try to avoid is to get into a remediation mindset or a deficit mindset. Because what happens is, is when you remediate, you actually create a larger gap for students. Most students are able with effective support to catch up or develop the appropriate skills, the necessary skills, if in fact we're using effective methods and really focusing on what's most important for students to know and be able to do. I think one of the things that happened with the standards movement back in the 90s is that we have the perception that we had to cover it all. And while we are responsible for covering the standards, there's also an obligation to making sure that we're focusing on what's most critical. Because otherwise, students won't, even if we cover it, they won't retain it. And so liberating educators from that fear that if they don't cover it all, that somehow they've been remiss or that they're not a good teacher, I think is also an important component. There's also many things that if we look at this from a strengths base perspective, we're going to be probably surprised at some of the things that our students did learn because of the circumstances that they were in, that we have yet to uncover or celebrate. So I'm not saying that there won't be gaps that need to be, to be bridged, but best practice is that they, they, they stay on course for their grade level expectations and then we provide them with the supports necessary to get them there, but to have those high expectations for them and provide them additional support if needed. When we pull them out, typically, we tend to increase the gap because they don't have access to that same material that other students have. So again, it's going to be brand-new territory for us. And there will be some students who will struggle. And then there will be students who struggle at first, but then developmentally, with some effective supports, they'll be back on pace in no time. And then there's the social emotional components that we know about, that have been caused by the isolation of some students. And we anticipate that some students will be nervous about returning to school, especially students who remain virtual. These are all things that we anticipate and we are continuing to expand and become better with our social emotional supports. And as we talk about some of our goals for the upcoming year and how we will look into what the needs are and making sure that we meet those needs. We know that relationship building, the relationship between students and teachers is the, is the number one factor for, for children. There's, there's nothing more important than an effective teacher and their relationship with the students in their classroom. So again, that, that's where we want to focus our efforts and provide support for teachers because they're entering new territory as well.
And you don't know middle school, back-to-school, summer barbecue, whatever you have for the seventh day of spring night, that back in the docket gym?
I don't know. So, yep.
That's a great integration to get them seeing faces and seeing friends again across the towns.
Leslieann?
Are we, or should we, are you all polling the families that opted to remain full remote to see if they're either A, coming back, or B, going somewhere else, or C, doing homeschooling? Like, do we know?
So homeschoolers send us an application. Virgals, we're not required to provide a virtual platform.
Sure.
And, and as you know, it's very expensive to, to provide that option, especially at the secondary level. It's particularly expensive because the number of courses that students take. So no, we, we anticipate that students will return in the fall. And that we may have some, some supports that some students may need. I, I have to tell you though, it was heartwarming to be at KES for the preschool celebrations. And I was there on the day that Cohort C, which was the remote cohort, they had never met each other in person. And they were running and hugging and acting as if they had been the best of friends since the, there was, there was nothing awkward about their interaction whatsoever. And they were, they were thrilled to see each other. So it was, it was one of the best moments of the year, quite frankly. And I, I didn't know they were Cohort C until Carrie whispered that this is Cohort C. And they'd never met each other in person. So.
Good.
Very sweet, very sweet.
Any other questions, comments? There was a brief.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I just, I know we talked a couple months ago and I know that the part of the professional development plan for staff is around the UBD stuff, which I love and super excited about. But also backwards planning or understanding by design that Ryan presented, was that last meeting, I think?
I think so.
That Ryan had talked about, presented. And I also imagine you already are and, and hope that you continue to, not just the social emotional of the kids, but many of the educators that I know ended this year fairly holding on to that as a profession or maybe not holding on to that as a profession. And really veteran educators who have been in this, you know, for 15 or 20 years and just, it was a hard year. And really encouraging the social emotional support for the adults in the building as well. And we talked about, you know, time to summer for you all as well, but I just think that was a really trying year. And knowing that the, the relationships between the adults and the students is so important and knowing that the person who's with your kids all day long is in their best space, you know, just continuing to keep that as something forefront of our mind as we move forward and not thinking like, oh, well, that year was over and now we're back to business. It's like, there's a lot of baggage people are still carrying. And those same anxieties of going back in the building without the masks and then no space and, you know, even vaccinated and these strands, you know, just the adults and keeping them...
We agree completely. And we focus a lot on team building with our administrative team. And we brought that on to our administrative retreat for the first two days of the summer. And then we share things with our principals to read back to their staff as well. But I think one of the exciting things that we're planning is really, although we're relying on the expertise of our teachers, we're celebrating the expertise of our teachers. That is going to be our opening day focus. So it's not, it, it, you know, the words cannot express the important role and the gratitude that, that we have for our, our educators and the, the impact that they can have on a child's life. And so it's kind of a double-edged sword because we're celebrating them, but at the same time, we're saying, will you please share these, you know, with the rest of us? Because this is, was such a powerful moment. And, and the good news is, is that they're, they're stepping up. And that, you know, we're going to have representation from, from the different schools to, to help kick off the start of the school year. But probably not what you were thinking of because we didn't, we're continuing to ask of them. But they're...
But celebrating.
They've been wonderful and excited to share some of the good things. And I, I think that in and of itself, focusing on some of the positive aspects, has been mentally healthy for many of us and not just for separating the negative aspects or the difficult aspects of the year. There's a lot to celebrate when people overcome obstacles. It changes you in a, it can change you in a very positive way and can feel you in a sense of empowerment. One of the things that we'll talk about on the opening day is the hero's journey and how, how it's altered.
Yeah, there's all the, all the research on the post-traumatic growth now as opposed to the...
Right.
Seem, seem the positive in that, so.
So we've...
Go ahead, Karen.
We've given it some thought. You know, what they really come with is some, you know, vacations to remote islands. But we're, we're going to do our best to try to show them how much we appreciate them. And continue to, you know, focus on supporting them, you know, with, with ways to, to help support the students in their room because we, we know that that is at the forefront of their concerns. So if we can help them in any way to make that a, a better or more effective environment, we're going to do what we can to try to make that happen.
Thank you. All righty, moving on. Moving on. Nothing into new business, old business. I'm going to start to tackle the update of the regional agreement topic in September. Update on dual enrollment. I know Michaela's not here. I don't know if there's anything to...
There isn't, but I, you're not going to believe this. So Gordon's watching our meeting. Hey, Gordon. And he noticed that, that he was going to go back and review the tape for you, Lisa, because he apparently has it on his computer. So he did it.
He never reviewed it.
He said that he picked it up off the table... He said that he picked it up off the table. There was a second, but there was no actual vote. And according to Robert, we were supposed to have a vote. But we can just choose what to do with that information. Just wanted to avoid having to watch the video.
Thank Gordon.
He says, so vote now.
So vote now? So he went back to the tape?
He went back to the tape and technically.
Is he making cookies too?
He is making cookies for me right now. So technically, according, if you don't pick it up by the end of the next meeting, it goes to bunk. But we voted on it, so I don't know.
So what we're saying is we need to vote on the minutes then?
No, 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 we do vote on the dual enrollment.
Vote, okay, got it.
We have to vote, pick it up off the table, and we have to vote it. Sorry.
So re, basically redo what we did. And it's not totally to dual enrollment, it's just our discussion of it.
Well, no, I mean, in the minutes, we voted.
We voted on the policy of dual enrollment.
All the policy.
Presented in the minutes. That's in the minutes, it looks like correctly. We just didn't procedurally reopen up the table.
The discussion to allow the vote.
So that vote we took is technically, I guess, valid.
So now if we motion to open up the discussion again and then motion the policy?
Yeah, so I guess I'll move to untable the discussion on dual enrollment from the May 20th meeting.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll move whatever Gordon's motion was, so we're just being consistent, which was, actually, you made it, Summer.
But you can, go ahead.
Make the motion dual enrollment as presented by Ms. Gill.
Yeah, it also says, I think you probably need another word there, make a motion to approve the dual enrollment policy as presented. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
Any further discussion on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then the only thing I would say for the minutes approval, if we want to do that now, is to, I guess they just stay in the R because that's what happened.
They say as they are, it's written, there's these minutes.
Okay, so then I'll move to approve these minutes?
You don't need to, it'll be caught up in this new set of minutes. Yep.
Okay, sorry, thanks.
So you got to approve the minutes from the 20th.
Yes.
Oh, right, yes. Oh, the back?
The back.
She didn't rescind or rescind.
Okay, as is, and then we catch up with the, okay.
With changes.
Which, yeah.
I rescind my residence.
Well, we just, you don't rescind, I think we're just going to approve the minutes again. Yeah.
So someone, did you motion to approve, did she second it or vice versa?
No, she moved.
Okay.
Just to prove the minutes as presented, because that's what happened.
Yep.
But we need to vote it again.
We did. And Lisa, by the way, I abstained from the vote on the policy.
Yes.
Okay.
So then we just need to vote that motion to approve the May 30th minutes, May 20th minutes.
Right. So I have a, I have a motion in a second, correct?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Sorry, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you, abstain.
Thank Gordon.
I was going to say.
Well, and then just, there is a correction, which is to approve, right?
Okay, perfect, all right, done.
Hopefully I made Gordon happy.
Okay, report to special committees.
Well, hello everyone, it's summer, so we're all happy to be back on the tour. First of all, behalf of SLEA, welcome to the committee. Just a couple of kind of housekeeping issues. I'm not sure if Dr. Prue already mentioned it, but we're waiting on paperwork from the job coaches to become SLEA members. This committee approved them to become SLEA members as a, to recognize them as SLEA members as a separate unit. So the paperwork's coming out now, they're going to sign it. And we'll be in touch to get something in place for them for a contract for the fall. I expect it hopefully to be pretty perfunctory. My intention, and this is something we'll have to discuss further with the negotiators, is that possibly they can be rolled into the AID contract. That's actually what we had suggested in the first place, but Fred had, I guess, presented some concerns because their job is different from the Aids. But I think if we sit down and talk about it, there may be a way we can roll that all intogether and then we won't have to be negotiating a fourth separate contract, which I'm sure we would all appreciate. So, but we, we'll just need to get something quick in place for them for possibly even one year. But like I said, I'm hopeful it's something really quick. And then the Aids, as Dr. Prue mentioned, are coming up this year. So we'll be in touch in the fall to formally open those negotiations. This is the first time, as most of you know, that they are SLEA members. They've been negotiating on their own and they asked to join, they will recognize the staffs here. So this is the first time that we will be negotiating. So it's going to be me, as always, and two other Aids that will really be negotiating. So I'll be in touch for that in the fall. So, you know, we're all very excited to be going back to school, hopefully as normal as possible. No masks, no virtual instruction. You know, a couple of things occur to me. I mean, some of it, Dr. Prue and a number you already touched on, which is, I think that, you know, there's a lot of doom and gloom about, you know, dirty loss and the, and the trauma situation. And I think that's real, I'm not trying to minimize that. But also, one of the most important factors for student achievement is grit. And I think that, you know, it's almost, if you'll forgive the expression, what doesn't kill you makes you stronger. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we can come out of this and actually see the kids able to overcome maybe more than they thought they could, having been through this experience, and the teachers as well. So the only thing that I guess maybe concerns me about the coming year is, well, I guess there's a couple of things. One is, we all hope that we can be back to normal and that none of this comes around again. We do have the Delta variant now, the worries about the virus. You know, we, we're ready to do whatever needs to be done to make this work, just as we have the capacity. So I would just ask if there has to be some kind of a negotiation game, God forbid, or any changes, just to be in touch with the union as soon as possible so that we don't get into a tough position, you know, being up against the tide. And then I guess the other thing is just in regards to the masking, you know, some concerns that were raised earlier in this meeting. You know, I have no issues with anything that Desi's put forward at this time. I guess the only thing I would ask is for the district to make sure that the message comes out that unvaccinated students are being encouraged to continue to mask. You know, I am not advocating that we check up on that or anything. But, you know, the official position right now of Desi and of the federal government is, unvaccinated individuals are supposed to mask and public. And my concern is just that people are going to get the message, nobody has to mask anymore, which is, you know, nobody has to, right? And that's true. But when people aren't being encouraged to, and I think we should get that message out. You know, we all know that the kids are unlikely to get very sick from this, which is a good thing. But, you know, they can spread it, certainly, they can spread it to people who might be vulnerable, maybe people with immune issues that haven't been able to get the vaccine. So, you know, I just would ask that the district make sure to put out that message that it is still okay to wear masks if you choose and that there are virtually people without the vaccine too, where are masks? And then I guess it's going to be our job, mine in particular, as a middle school teacher, to make sure that the kids who still aren't wearing, who are still wearing masks don't get bullied for it. Because I can see that dangerousness as well. Anyway, thanks again, everybody, for all your hard work and I certainly hope that we have a more normal year this coming year.
Thank you for that, John. And I think clearly, as any protocol would be communicated in the district, this one will be communicated as, right? And, you know, in a, in a normal way. And as you indicated, I'm certain you're still going to have students wearing masks for all the reasons you suggested. You know, there's, there's times when I will still put one on. You know, myself going somewhere that's very clustered and, you know, just too close for comfort. You know, so that's, you know, if you're in an Uber or a cab ride or something, that's, I don't know. I just, I think this made me a little bit more of a germaphobic than I used to be, but. Are you really?
I thought all the way in April.
I've never been a germaphobic, I'm just a little bit more Larry now than I used to be, but. But thank you for that, John, thank you. And enjoy the rest of your summer. And September will be here before we know it, end of August will be here before we know it.
Paula, can I just ask John a question?
Sure.
So, John, would you mind just polling whoever it is you're going to represent you for the negotiations in the fall and suss out whether they're interested in in-person negotiations or remote, since we can still do that? Only because I actually think that the remote ones were somewhat helpful because you could leave and come back. You know, it was, it was somewhat efficient in that way.
Do you know if that's a preference of the committee?
We haven't even talked about it, I just would like to know your answer when we start to get that.
So it's only two other people besides me, so I'll ask them and I'll let you know.
Okay. I'm game for it, I'm game for a vote.
And then I would assume for the job coaches, there's only three of them, how do we do that remotely?
Yeah. And just for anybody who's not certain of negotiations, I mean, there's a lot of, we talk to them, they go off and caucus on their phone, we go off and caucus, so I mean, it's just much easier to virtually caucus than it is to.
And they're usually scheduled for two hours at a time.
Yeah, so just, I'm not suggesting, I mean, I'm all for it, you seem all for it, but I'd love to know. You know, we're not going to force anything on you, so go on, let me get this done.
I would just think it's more flexible from schedule and standpoint too, so I'm completely for that as well. All right, thank you for that.
I just think the question that came up, that made me think, but I didn't, like, prior to COVID, if a student wore a mask, wouldn't that have violated a dress code policy? And then, so now that there's not COVID and we've taken out the mask mandate from the policies, do we need to clarify that a mask wouldn't violate a dress code policy? Is that a relevant question?
So, yes, and off the top of my head, I don't know that we have anything against. So basically, masks in schools generally, you wouldn't want to not be able to know who a student was. So, for example, costumes that students would wear where you couldn't identify the student wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah.
I don't, off the top of my head, know the exact wording of our district policy. We put in place a policy specifically for masking due to these health reasons. And tonight, you have first reading of EBCFA, which would keep the opportunity, I forget the exact word, without looking at it. Is that in our package tonight? So policies. So if you look at case coverings, what we're saying, what it says is the superintendent, in consultation with the nurse leader of the district, has the authority to modify or suspend the Civil Lake Regional Schools mask policy to keep it in line with DESI guidance, Mass Department of Health guidance, and CDC guidance without further authorization or votes of individuals. So in fact, let's say the Department of Health required it, let's say something changed. This would allow us for the nurse leader and I to work together with the Department of Health to determine whether or not it was necessary and required, at any rate, with or without this policy. If it's regulatory or the Department of Health requires it, we would have to do it anyway. But this would provide us with some flexibility to distinguish between that kind of mask and this kind of mask.
But like, if it's not, let's say we continue forward, no mandate that you wear, but this kid right here wants to wear a mask, I want to wear a mask, whatever kid. Do we need to have a policy that allows them to wear the mask? Like, if you rescinded this and you say there's no more mandate, you have to wear a mask, can I choose to wear a mask without violating a dress code policy? Maybe this, does it make, does the question make sense to other people?
No, it's fine, I just was waiting till we got to it.
Oh, I did, am I speaking to them or something?
No, it's a good question.
My thought, though, is, like, when you.
You ever walked into this, you ever walked into this building during the day or seen kids coming into this building during the school day?
Okay, I worked in high schools, so.
Okay, so you understand that they don't follow the dress code policy?
Yes, 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 very.
Yes, like, it's not something that's ever enforced. So I can't imagine that we would have a circumstance in coming off the heels of a pandemic where a teacher would say, get that mask off your face and violate the dress code policy when you have young ladies walking around showing almost everything and teachers don't say a word.
I definitely see the dress code policy enforced at the middle school.
I don't know, I just thought, like, is it something we just want to make sure that the kids do feel comfortable about or why?
No, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
So currently, the policy that you'd be voting on is students and staff may wear protective face mask styles that are two ply or greater in order to protect themselves and others. This is a very different kind of mask than I may wear a scary skeleton mask, afraid of people.
But if it's for a medical reason or for public health, you can't restrict it for dress code anyhow.
Right, okay.
Like, you can't tell a kid he can't come in with crutches or.
Right.
There's a health and safety.
Yeah, exactly.
Carrie's going to make sure before we, like, we were aware that kids still have the option. Probably for.
Of course, people will be terrible wearing masks. They still have, they still have the option, although I, I can foresee perhaps a time when maybe it will come to our attention that they want to, someone could come forward and say they don't want students to be able to wear masks for whatever reason. But I think at this point, I think, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, administrative review. We did not have a meeting. CTE?
CTE, we had a quick meeting, just to update what was going on in Elliot's world in terms of enrollment still being strong and then scheduling a reading later this summer to kind of tour, inviting all the new committee members who haven't had a tour in the last two years to see what's going on. So, great.
Very good, thank you. Chairman's report, I know correspondence that you folks do not have. I know you had sent out, I think, Captain LaMandra had secured grant money.
It was a grant that was, Buffy Hines had applied for and was approved.
Yep, and I think they, the whole committee got that correspondence. So I have no correspondence that you folks haven't had shared with you. Legislative agent, he is not here tonight. He is so thrilled with his role and he will do a wonderful job, so there's no report there tonight. Negotiations, again, we have not had a meeting. We know that there will be a couple coming up. Pat?
We met on June 17th to approve a budget for next year to change some of our fee schedule for professional services to make them more in line with the going rates. Also, to approve some hourly pay rates for extended services. Updated the handbook a little bit. And then sort of the big sort of fun news, because always should have fun news that comes, is that they voted, or we voted to establish a student council, which was brought forward by two students and two teachers who wanted to start a student council such that they could have a voice in what goes on in their school, which is pretty remarkable for these kids. And it's also a little bit, you know, complex because some of the kids aren't staying in that system for very long and some are. But they seem very excited about actually exerting some leadership skills and getting organized, which is great. So we approve that.
Wow, that's fantastic. Thank you. Policy?
I will make a motion that we waive the actual reading, but accept as the first reading of policies, EBCFA, EAD, EAD, EDC slash EAG, GCA, IC slash ICA, ID, ID, JH, JLCC, JLCC. Who put the place?
You have so much, I told my agenda twice too.
JRA and KAI.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion of this?
I'd like to have a discussion.
Sure.
We'll try to keep it brief because we kind of already had most of the discussion a few minutes ago.
But I, since the new guidelines have been released from DESI and we just kind of had discussion regarding masks, I would like to rescind the face mask policy, face mask policy, EBCFA. Like, completely rescind it. Like, our middle school's not required to wear masks, our high schoolers are not required to wear masks. I know that we, during our subcommittee meeting, changed the policy and amended it to give.
to give the authority to the superintendent to follow these guidelines. But as she just stated, if it comes down from the top and it's a regulatory issue, we're gonna have to follow it regardless, we don't really need a policy for that, and if we need to enact one, we can reenact one. But I think moving forward post-COVID, that we should just get rid of it altogether. That would be my two cents on it.
And that's this top one here, the...
Yep.
The first one.
The EBCFA.
My only caution would be is that if it's not regulatory, it would, it would require a policy, and therefore, it would require two votes, and you would have less, we would have less flexibility of implementing something sooner rather than later.
But if it's not regulatory, then why wouldn't you be doing it?
You could get a recommendation from the Kingston Board of Health, because let's say there's an outbreak in Kingston.
So my...
I'm, I'm just trying to think of those, you know.
So I guess my only issue with that is, I, I don't, it's not that I don't trust you and your judgment, Jill, because we've had this conversation in the past, we had it during our policy subcommittee meeting, is that if we leave this here and you leave us and you have somebody else here that says, well, I have the authority to just say that I want half the kids in masks because I don't feel comfortable, that's where I have a major issue, is this gives that authority, takes it away from...
And I don't take your concern personally at all, I just feel a need to express to the committee some unforeseen that, that the language gives us flexibility with, and I appreciate your kind words and of support with regards to that you trust me with that, with that decision. And I'm not planning on going anywhere, I will drive very safely, hauling my seatbelt on. I, you know, I, I get nervous, because I recall when we, I forget what it was that was put into place, if you can help me out, I'm drawing a blank, but there were a few superintendents who had to wait for their school committee to vote, and they're, oh, it was because they didn't have the flexibility and it was no longer required outside, and their mask policy was written so strictly that they had to wait for their school committee to overturn the policy. And you can imagine the backlash they got from parents, because they couldn't pivot quickly, they didn't have a flexible policy. So that's my, my only concern, because I saw superintendents follow policy and say, I'm sorry, I can't rescind it until the school committee does it, and then they really, they really faced the music with the public who wanted their children to be able to be at recess without a mask.
Right.
So, and so, but if it was... Do we even have a second on this motion, because if we're not, we don't, we don't need to discuss it? And I'm not seconding this motion, I don't really, if Brittany else wants to, but...
Did you actually make a motion?
I didn't, I said I would like to, I said I wanted to halt the vote of the entire policy package to discuss this policy.
So are you making a motion to rescind that from?
I haven't made a motion.
That's what I was saying, I said I would like to...
So we have the first and a second on all the policies, and then that opens it for discussion before we take a vote.
Right, so, and I also wanna just mention that Kingston School Committee just voted 5-0 to rescind this policy from their building.
That, that's fun, that's fabulous, they can do what they wanna do, I'm just throwing, I just wanna proceed your point of order, like...
Right, if we're in order, because we had a first, we had a second, and that opens it up for overall discussion before we vote all of these policies as approved.
Okay.
The first we gave, I like hold, held this one, I wanna discuss this one in the group.
Okay.
Do you have anything you wanna mention?
I mean, yeah, so I'll make the motion to rescind it.
To amend my motion to remove it, or, or wait?
No, I think we have to make, so I don't, actually procedurally, no, do we have to make a step first?
You make a amendment, because...
But then she, but then what she's saying is she wants to get rid of this completely from her policy.
Right, so she's suggesting the amendment to yours, and I don't mean to put words in mother speak over you, she's suggesting the amendment to remove this one policy.
Yeah, so I...
Don't we already have this policy in place?
Yes.
So she's, she needs to vote, remove it from the update, but then also completely remove it from her. So I think it would be two different votes, right?
And then, I think I have to go back to the policy subcommittee and have it removed there. Correct?
Well, the first step, I think is...
Or, or it's done.
First step is remove it from this.
Right, so let's see if there's a second to your amendment.
Okay, so I make a motion to amend Eric's motion and remove policy EBCFA from this motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
So I guess not, so then it ends there. So then, my follow-up question is, if I bring it to the policy subcommittee and we, as a policy subcommittee, motion to rescind this policy, then we come back to this committee and say, and then that's, that's...
Then we vote, then we would have to vote on it, on rescinding it or not.
Yeah.
The policy subcommittee can't rescind it on their own, they have to bring it to the school committees, and we have to do two readings, and then vote.
Yeah.
So it, it happens over a series of months, yeah.
So then hypothetically, we could have the elementary committees rescind it and the overlay committee not, correct?
True, okay, yeah. So, we're back to the original motion now?
Yes.
Any further, go ahead.
I just wonder if Jill could give us any clarification on EEA, student transportation services, and the, God, please, don't run like a cross, EEA, EC, and EAG relative to the change? Because what you're striking out says, "Subject to current law and regulations, the superintendent may suspend or modify policies related to transportation of students by the school district. Legal requirements related to IEPs and contained transportation for students shall not be altered without the program family consent," so removing that. These modifications shall be consistent with the district back-to-school plan.
I believe the intention of the subcommittee was to remove it, because there is no back-to-school plan anymore.
Okay.
So, we are returning to full in-person five days a week, and so that was the reason for striking that.
But it's not the intent to remove family consent for folks on I, kids on IEPs?
No.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
Same with the EAG.
Right, there's three of them that have the same strikeout?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, the motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Thank you. All right, you've all been down, no meeting, Safer?
Safer, we just met tonight at five. Went through a handful of things, sort of looked at a recap of what happened in the spring in town meetings. You know, tennis courts, they are safe, they will pass with about 10 grand in repairs, and we'll see how long that lasts, and trying to figure out what we do going forward in terms of 2023, is 2024, what projects we have, and start building out the multi-year to kind of get communicated. We are gonna meet, like I said before, with CTE, I guess, the same time, do a campus tour, and see what CTE's got going on, have Matt and Jill show us potential projects that are coming up, so we can see them on person versus photos or words. And then the plan additionally is to set up a three-town sort of summit, I'll call it, in September, in September, with selectmen, fin comps, capital plans, whoever else wants to join the fun, in one big three-town meeting, so we don't have three meetings in different towns with different words being spoken. We say, hey, here's our capital plan agenda, here's what we have going on, revisit making a stabilization fund that we can get approval for, and just kind of get them on board on some big project things, add and build, and be, one of them actually is on, whatever, three, four, six, eight-year plan to get that fixed, updated, rebuilt, whatever the word might be for that. So, it was a productive meeting, it was good, and we'll keep going on installing.
Could you just clarify on the tennis courts?
Yeah.
There was a big deal at the Halifax Town meeting, Halifax turned down, I was in the real tennis, voted in favor, so...
Yeah, so, Clinton, I believe, voted in favor, Kingston never took a vote about the matter at that point, about full funding. The Martha administration found about 10 grand of patch, and by patch, about equally, the cracks were up to an inch deep wide, and as, not surface cracks, the cracks actually go through all levels of material. So they're only gonna be widening as weather gets in there, there really isn't a repair, that's okay, we get six inches eighties in the ground, repair it, so we're still calling it a band-aid, I guess. It worked for the spring season, I think they're still open in terms of if the public wants to use it. But in terms of how long that lasts, we don't have a great idea, because 10 grand on whatever, four or five courts is very, very temporary. So we'll have to figure out how to fund it, hopefully, a large ticket item, as we said, for the capital plan we have, you know, we'd be at 400,000 over this year, and we're gonna spend 300 on something, target spend, you know, three or $400,000 on a test course. So we'll have to work hard to figure out how to fund it, fund, do a bond package maybe in a few years, get a couple of it out of it, who knows?
So, Chris, are those courts something that are decertifiable, is a big word?
I got the word.
Thank you.
We did not get, no, we talked about, Jill mentioned this, there is a potential, you know, in the future, next spring, year after, that towns will refuse to come play here for the safety. And then we have costs that have all our matches to be aware of.
But if I recall, Prentice and I, we use them both seasons, fall and spring, because the boys play one season, the girls play another, and then they switch for lacrosse, right? That's the way I recall it, don't the...
Tennis?
Or is that golf?
No, tennis and golf.
Is that golf?
Tennis all the spring.
Tennis all the spring, okay, there's a lacrosse, golf, flip, I think, or something. Anyhow, okay, so that's not on these boards, so we don't have to, we don't have any formal play until spring.
No formal play this spring, it's still used for gym classes and extracurriculars and so forth, so used for that. So if somehow it becomes unsafe, we would have an internal issue with Martha and Brick and them, you know, doing their games out there and stuff, but I don't know, I don't know if we had any conversation about what would qualify as decertification or unsafe, because it was pretty bad before, quite frankly.
No, I mean, I just...
I was surprised how bad it was.
I'm just wondering, Madam Chair, about our liability that would carry them, right? Because, I mean, we know that they're in disrepair and someone gets hurt, that's negligence-ish, or approaching negligence, so I don't know what that process is for determining that.
We, it's safe, we didn't have the indication from Matt Turkey that it was unsafe, or a use of your own risk kind of thing, I mean, I think we're playing sport, there's always a certain risk, but...
I get that.
I did ask, I asked if we can lock it up and not allow the public to use it over the summer. You know, they didn't wanna pay to fix it, but Matt said it's not in that, you know, that it's not unsafe right now.
And are you all, I mean, I know I'm not a lawyer, I swear to God, but are you all getting that in writing? I mean, is somebody documenting that this has been evaluated, it's still safe to play on, and we can play on it? Because I'm concerned about that.
Do we have a formal review process for tennis courts?
I would want to go for office, or if, like, if a track tears up on a Thursday and you have it out there in August, we don't have an inspection process, we need to keep things insured certified, I don't know.
I mean, I don't think we're in that state yet, I just wanna make sure that that's documented, that we're not, and that they're safe to play on, somewhere.
So when they activist, it did not give a opine on safety-related information, more of what it would take to repair certain things, certain fields, certain upgrades, those kinds of things. It was more of an estimate and not really evaluative in that kind of sense. And so what I think, I think what's blurred to me is to what extent is there a town oversight for safety versus MIAA influence over safety expectations for fields and courts and things of that nature, I think we'll have to look into that, because that's, there may be an interception of the two, or it may go to, maybe...
Yeah, I think she's...
One authority over the other.
Let's answer a great point, like the Lake Street parking lot, we sort of thought that was very unsafe with the crumbling.
We had the recording fall and break around that.
Common knowledge of this is really a disrepair, I don't know.
Or is it very clearly posted, you know, and this is for all of our facilities, use of your own risk?
That wouldn't cover us for gym class, though.
No, right.
For what it's worth for public use, like Halifax Elementary Tennis Courts, or the Grudge, and the Quaker side. Either the town is thinking about it, or they're worried about liability for protecting it somewhere.
But now we're talking about a band-aid patch anyway, which should smooth over any of those cracks.
For some time.
Right, so that should...
I mean, raise an effort to repair them for the time being, I mean, that's definitely, sounds like Halifax, they're probably making an effort to repair theirs, but we have.
No, I mean, we're a girl in a freaking garden.
Actually, our youth and rec is in the process of raising funds to replace the tennis courts and basketball courts in the back. They're working with the town and the school to try to make a collaborative effort, because it is very expensive.
Yeah.
So it's a long-term project that they do have on their radar.
It may just be that we, whoever repaired it, you know, needs to send us a letter of their professional judgment, it'll be good for two years or something like that, while we come up with a longer plan, I'm just throwing it out there.
No, we didn't get a timeframe in terms of how long the band-aid lasts, because the cracks are so deep, it's also all made to the surface.
I think we will come to it.
Yeah.
Do we have exemptions from our insurance company that may apply to this particular question?
Well, negligence would have to exist, and we, it was brought to our attention that it was in some stage of disrepair, and we have made an effort to manage that stage of disrepair. And it was a tennis company, an expert tennis company that did their work on it, and we have not been given any indication that it's at that level of failure.
All right.
We just know that through use, it will continue to diminish.
Okay, just want that everybody to hear that.
Sound safe?
Excellent, thank you, more work to come, more work to come. School stop times, we talked about that earlier, treasures report?
I could do it for tonight, but I'd be happy to pass this on to you afterwards, my friend. Gay. Tonight, I have lots of warrants circulating, I know it's been quite some time, so thank you for your patience and thank you for signing and checking them out. For FY21 to close out, there are 24 warrants totaling $4,802,797.54, and that does include the lump sum payroll for the teachers. And then, for FY21, there is one warrant, we traditionally have one warrant for the new year, because we'd like to take advantage of discounts that we can get, and one of them is our flumant out to assessment pay that we pay for the year, as well as our insurance premium to the year, we do get a discount for paying our part. So that is also the package for tonight, and those, that warrant totaled $1,656,218.2. Thank you.
Thank you. Unit 31, no meeting. You already talked about the single signature warrants.
This is actually about the actual warrants that my kind friends here signed. On June 15th, 20 warrants were sent to the superintendent and our group of single signature warrant folks, and that was signed by Eric, Chris Athlant, and Paula, and we had warrants that were, 20 warrants totaling Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, future meeting dates, August 30th, 31st in-service date for the teachers, September 1st, first day of school, September 6th, Labor Day, and September 9th, our next meeting. Listening in for...
I just have a quick question on the future meeting dates, Madam Chair, I'm just trying to pencil these into my calendar.
Yeah.
Did we intend to have a December 3rd meeting, which is a Friday night?
If it is on our calendar, yes, we did.
Because right now it's on a Friday, according to, not that I don't want to see you all on Friday, I'm just, I just don't know if it was meant to be the second. Right now it's on the third here.
It's a formal holiday party.
You know, if that's our intent, I just think it's supposed to be the second.
I don't have that list.
It's on the list.
It's on this list that we got last evening.
Yes, I apologize, I'm not saying it to argue that, you're saying December 2nd?
I'm just saying right now we voted on December 3rd, and I...
December 3rd.
I don't think that was our intention, that to have it on a Friday night, it's not, can we motion to change that to the second? I don't see any other meeting here that's conflicting with it, but, I mean, I'm conflicted moving to the second.
Who wants to put out an alternative if we don't wanna meet on a Friday evening?
I would just move that we change it to December 2nd.
Second.
Okay, let's see if there's any conflicts with administration on. Okay, it's just a mistake.
Is, I don't, so...